All right, I will call to order the bi-monthly meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee, and there's my gavel. I want to say thank you to Kate Anne for coming to film us, appreciate that. So, why don't we get started? Public comment, and before we do that, I just kind of want to frame where we are with public comment. We try to follow Robert's Rules of Order, and in doing so, we ask that if you have something to say, please stand, raise your hand, identify yourself, I'll call on you, and comments should be directed to me. And, we don't have a huge group, but we'd like to try to limit it to about two minutes per speaker, and each speaker has one shot on the same topic. And so with that, I will open it up to public comment. Any more? No? Okay. Moving along, student report, I guess we will wait for Spencer.
I'll let you guys know your names tonight.
Yes, okay. That's what all that is.
Yeah, they're still going back and forth.
Okay, great. Chairman's report. I don't have a ton to say, just driving that sort of late start bus out of the parking lot, little at a time. March 5th, we're hoping to have some folks from Newburyport come and join us to talk about kind of their experience with the whole late start effort.
Yeah, I reached out to them again and got a couple responses, so, but I haven't had a chance to see them.
Okay, great, we'll look forward to that. And, I'm going to hold any comments till later with regard to the budget. Budget effort. The agenda. The warrants and the minutes of 129-19. Do I have a motion?
Can I make a correction?
Yes.
They're actually the minutes of 115-19. I want to have a review.
You did.
You did? Okay, so I didn't, I sent you stuff, and I will send 129 minutes.
Just a little later. Got it. In those minutes, I just wanted, I wanted to reflect it somewhere.
Watch this.
Dale, in those minutes, can we reflect it somewhere that we appreciate the support of the boosters?
Of course.
I don't think, I don't think it's recognized in there, they donated Jim.
It wasn't the, it wasn't the, but I will boost, I will boost it up.
Thank you. I like that. Okay, all in favor?
So it's just the minutes of, it's no minutes at all, because we didn't see them before. So it's just the warrant.
Correct.
Yes. So.
All in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Okay, no abstentions? Right. Okay, so that's committee reports. So I figure we'll take all of these in order except for the finance stuff, we'll kick that down to the budget, if that's okay with everyone, because it's all related. Okay. Caroline and Annie?
Not too many to report.
Yeah, we have work to do. But tomorrow night we're doing the VE, so, if anyone wants to come in.
Value engineering.
Value engineering.
Network was already done today, I think?
Mm-hmm.
And it was.
Yep.
What time is that?
It's at 7:00.
Again, didn't you guys go through one round of that before, or was that the preliminary stage?
You gotta keep, you gotta keep sharpening your pencil.
Don't I know it, baby.
That's what we're all about.
All right.
Here at Manchester Essex.
Rachel's school committee. The sun got to you today, huh?
It did.
Okay, communication, Rachel and Ken.
We don't have anything new to speak.
Where's Ken?
He's right here.
Ken's hiding.
Reported last week, and we haven't met since then.
Okay, wow, we're moving along.
We're moving along.
Negotiation team, Sarah and Julie.
We had a lot of meetings.
All right.
And things are progressing.
They are. Excellent. Okay. All right. Next, we'll move on to the bond. James Bond? James, shaken not stirred, 35.
All right, so, just send a quick summary of what's happened, a couple of big things. A, we got credit rating, had, went with the new ratings agency, S&amp;P, from Booty's. They like where we're at, they essentially upgraded us to double A+, which is one step shy of AAA, which is great to see. They noted how we have two communities that are strong and healthy financially, but also support the school system, and they like what we're doing with our budget management, and also have a keen eye to our level of reserves, which is pointed out. And they, they like the collaboration that we do with both towns as part of our budget process. There, you know, there's some items that you may remember from like the management letter about policies around financial policies that we, to be honest, have never focused a lot of attention on, because they've been, we've been talking about how we do business, and it's been pretty consistent, and I think they noticed that, but we could always maybe formalize some of those policies. But I think there's one thing that we could do to continue having strong rating or upgrade it, would be just continue to focus on our level of reserves. So that's the bond rating. The issue, we did finally go out for $35 million worth of bonds, and got a rating of, sorry, a essential interest cost of 3.289%. So, publicly bid, so all sorts of financial firms are, you know, bid what type of interest rate they would charge us, and we go with the lowest. And so that's how we got there, we had nine bidders. And, so, that's going very well, and we're gonna, when we get to the budget, we're gonna have an updated capital budget that incorporates those bonds. The numbers came in definitely as savings compared to what we talked about at Fall Town Meeting, where we were conservatively estimating 5% interest rates, 3.289 is much lower, and basically looking at this point to have us on track to save, I want to get the right number, $17 million over the life of debt service. So that's pretty big, $17 million. It's about 22% savings, and so in Manchester, it would be about $12 million, and in Essex, about $6 million worth of savings over the life of the bonds, compared to what we had thrown out as potential estimates. Yep, so that's about $390,000 from Manchester, annual length of savings for every year over the course of that process, and about $190,000 for Essex every year over the course of that process. Now, there are ups and downs each year, it's not always consistent, but we were able to use a lower interest rate to also have another structure that allows us to pay the bonds a little more quickly, and ultimately contributes to that savings as well. So we're doing a lot of things to generate savings, and I think the credit report helped us as well. We had a great collaborative group with members of the town representatives from the finance committees, board selectmen, county administrators, which was great, so everyone was on board with the strategy and the approach, and we had a lot of great service from Hilltop, formerly for Southwest, who really helped us figure out what our options were, and fitted into the long-term planning that includes an eventual roll-off of the high school debt, and maybe one day thinking about how the Essex project might fit in. So we have some votes that need to happen here, and there's a lot of documents to sign. I'm just going to send around the form of votes for everyone, because we do need to take a vote tonight, and then subsequently get a lot of documents signed by various votes, which we can do after the meeting. But I would like to request that the school committee takes a vote on the language as presented. It's a total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 votes, that all allow us to proceed with the bonding. Basically, the eight votes, the language of which we will enter into the record identically, because it was prepared by legal counsel, spells out the actual payments that we're going to make, it spells out how much we're going to be borrowing, it spells out the fact that the premium we received helps us to reduce future borrowing, it spells out that we had a public disclosure through our offering statement, all those types of things, and that the school committee is in fact authorized to vote on all, on all of these votes as presented. So that's basically a summary of what's here, and if we could vote to approve the language as approved, I think it's two pages long, I think it might be.
So you want me to make a motion to approve?
Before we do that, can I open it up to any questions?
No.
No? Okay, questions?
I just have questions about what we just talked about.
Yeah.
Avi?
Yeah.
Oh god, it's gone. This is a good story to tell, so I do want to get something out to voters about this when we buckle things down. I'm sure it's probably already in your annual report, is it?
Well, yeah, when we do our budget, we just got this, these results on Thursday, but we do a budget booklet that goes to all residents in the spring, and we're definitely going to include it right up on this.
Yeah.
It came in after the annual report, technically it'll go into next year's, because it's the 19 year.
Yeah, but I think Caroline and I have been talking about, we need to write an article, I think this is maybe an additional article that we could write about the financing of it, I think, kind of there's one that's like, what's the status of the building, and then the other is the financing of it.
Correct.
And the other question I had was about this summary about our rating.
Yeah.
Does any of this show up in the auditors? You know, the auditor always gives us like a list of things we need to do, and it looks like there's some recommendations on policies.
Yeah, so, yep, I probably didn't explain that very well, but there is some alignment between the recommendations here and what the auditors have presented. I think, to be honest, we focused most of our attention from the auditor recommendations in the management letter on items that really shore up our operating performance in our long-term planning. This is much more of a policy recommendation, which just formalizes really what we're doing already.
Yeah.
So I think it's a good idea. I think one of the reasons the auditors and S&amp;P recommends policies is so that things we're doing don't end up being specific on the people in the place, but really more on the organization as a whole. And so that's a nice long-term step that we can do, and I think we would be wise to do that before we go out to bond again next time, just to show that we're taking that seriously.
Yeah, okay. Great, so, sorry about that.
No worries, I just have one quick question by way of clarification. When you talked about the savings, the $17 million, what was the percentage on that?
22.
22%. That's huge.
And that assumes that the last little stub amount goes out at 5%.
Right.
So it probably could be better than that, but it's too early to say, we won't bond the last remaining portion for about another year and a half at minimum.
Okay.
Two and a half years, excuse me.
Okay, okay. All right. So do I have a motion to accept the language as written with regard to the $35 million bond issuance?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, we borrowed $35 million, because of the premium that we received, the bonds are actually 32.29 million.
Okay.
We're getting the full $35 million, but the bonds get reduced by the premium amount. We get the same amount, 32.29 is the amount of bonds.
Okay, great, thank you. So do I have a motion?
So moves.
Second. Great, all in favor?
I am.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Great, thank you, Avi.
Thank you.
And thanks to Greg, and Brendan, and other folks who helped with this process, that was very collaborative.
Yeah, good team effort.
Effective.
Thank you.
Our bond weeks. Thank you. Or I should say, our bond geniuses.
Okay.
So, moving on to the budget. So we were in kind of a relatively sort of stable place, nothing really crazy going on with the budget, and last week we got some information from Essex, saying that they were having some problems meeting some of their obligations, and could we possibly help by lowering the assessment. So, that was kind of news out of left field, and we've been talking about this for the last couple of days. So, we have some discussion ahead of ourselves. I'd like to preface it by saying Essex has been a fabulous partner, and they have really helped us, and it doesn't go without notice that the town of Essex just voted for a school in Manchester, that was a heavy lift. And this is a huge decision for us, because we have cut almost $2 million out of our budget in the last three years to accommodate for a healthcare shortage without having to go back to the towns. So this puts us in a really difficult place. And so I preface by saying that, and I think I will kick it to Pam and Avi for the details.
So, now I have no more questions.
It's okay.
You all have a summary in front of you of the issue that's been presented to us, so I guess we're here tonight typically after two budget hearings and a lot of vetting and discussions at this table, typically we present, be presenting you the two formal documents that are coming around now, which is the finalized version of the budget. And if you recall, in that finalized version of the budget, we had targeted coming in at 3.3% spending increase to be in line with where we have been over the past couple of years, and in line with the towns' expectations as to what we would be presenting with them. And to get there, we had already gone through and cut about $380,000 in program, through what we thought would be realized savings in healthcare, for about $175,000, $125,000 in staffing attrition, and savings on rehires, and then some prepayments to out-of-district placements of about $80,000. That being said, instead of just putting a ball on that tonight, we find ourselves trying to solve a new problem. So we start with, the problem we're trying to solve is how to reduce assessments to Essex while at the same time not damaging the program any further. So I think our obstacles are very simple. We had a 28% increase in healthcare that we started dealing with back in FY18, and between FY18 and FY19, we cut approximately 100, 1.5 million dollars in costs through program and staffing. As I just said, going into FY20, we cut another $380,000. That being said, those were dollars that were factored into multi-year plans for staffing, realignments, program investments, staffing investments. I think we would have certainly realized some enrollment savings through that time, but we also lost many of our tools to start addressing some of our initiatives and strategic goals. At this point, I think another obstacle is that further, we're at the point where further reductions are going to start eating into the base programming, and create larger problems for us down the road in trying to build back. I think to try to make the level of cuts that we would need within a month, knowing that we already have some reorganization to do to meet some enrollment needs this year, we would need more time to do that in a thoughtful way, that really examine the long-term impacts of decisions that we were making. And I think overarching to all of this, when you take, you take one of these one-year hits out of the way, what happened to Essex this year with some of the numbers that came in from them, our unexpected healthcare, we know that through history and our multi-year model, that our level services annual growth number is somewhere between mid-3s and high-3s, not 3-3. So by artificially pushing ourselves into that annual growth rate, we automatically put ourselves in reduction. We're in a reduction mode, we've been able to do it surgically, but we're running out of surgical options at this point. So, again, it's all, there's always a way to cut the budget, but I don't know that we have a thoughtful and expedient way of doing it right now or next year. That being said, we took a look at what our options were, and we would recommend to you, or propose a solution to you, which utilizes $100,000 of reserves. This in effect lowers assessments without lowering spending, so it allows us to still go through and make our $380,000 cuts, but not go any lower than that. So carry forward the program that we intended to at the beginning of this budget season. Pros and cons? Essentially preserves, it preserves the current level of spending, no further cuts. And we do know that money going into reserves from FY18, so the closeout of FY18, the certification for E&amp;D, will return dollars into reserves, so the numbers that we've been citing in our reports through budget season will hold steady, because we know we're already going to increase them, the level that we've been talking about. We also know that through the borrowing that we just officially approved, we're going to be earning interest income on the money as it sits and waits to be allocated to different bills and invoices throughout the process. By law, I've got a great lesson for Avi in this, that money will flow into our general ledger. So, we will earmark it and put it into reserves for stabilization and capital spending, we can talk more about that later on, but we know one of the reasons we've been monitoring reserves and holding reserves so tight is to be prepared for capital investments, so we'll, we'll be getting dollars in that can be allocated to capital investments. So that's a long way of saying, I think we can put $100,000 in while still maintaining our strong reserve, strong reserve levels. The cons are more structural than they are about the number and use of reserves. I think, step one, it reintroduces reserves into the revenue stream as a way of managing our annual budget and assessments to towns. That's a practice that we purposely moved away from after our last override, because what we know is over time, it's a heavy lift to take those reserves out. So once we put them in and we suppress the assessments, it's a number everybody learns to live with, and to pull them out means finding that money where we can't find it now. So we have to either look to increased assessments from the town to make up the difference, more cuts to make up the difference if we pull the reserves out, or eventually an override. I think with the level of reserves we have and the level we're proposing using, we could sustain that level of utilization for three to five years. I think that covers the pros and cons. So at this point, it's really for you to discuss your level of comfort, and where you'd like us to proceed from here.
Okay, why don't we go around the, go around the horn?
Go start on that side.
Okay, go that side. Sorry, Sarah.
Am I starting?
No, it's okay.
We can go either.
I'm happy to start. I'm not, I'm, I'm not 100% comfortable with it, of course I'm not, I don't want to take money out of reserves, but I think that we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, and I think that our collaboration groups have worked really hard, and I trust, I trust Pam and Avi to make a good decision, and if this is the recommendation, I think I can live with that. But I think it's clear that we're going to need to go for an override in the next couple of years at some point, whether we do this or not, I don't think this is what's forcing us into a situation.
Can I just make a point of clarification? Are you recommending that we do this, or you're recommending this is our, the best option?
This is an option.
But it's not necessarily a recommendation to us to do this?
I think to solve the problem, to lower the assessments to Essex, this would be our proposed solution.
Okay.
Clarifying question off of that, when we left last, last week's meeting, there was a, it was a talk of, there was a number that Essex had, I think I was thinking $150,000 rings, that was surprised where they were going to go above. And then there was a discussion last Friday, that was about, what was the ask, and so this, this $100,000 would reduce the Essex assessment by essentially $33,000. Is that in line with what Essex was asking? I don't.
No, Essex, and Ben, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Essex was asking for, well, their whole is about 145, right? 145,000? And this would address that to the tune of 35,000. So no, it doesn't cover.
Okay.
It helps.
We will take what we can get.
Yeah.
Hey, that was just one, no, I wanted to hear kind of Essex's perspective.
Sorry, I opened, I just wanted to, can I ask them, like, just a question about the conversation that we had on Friday morning, which was about the interest and capital spending. And I know that some folks felt pretty strongly that the interest money should go to capital spending, and we have 60,000 for maintenance. Is there any way of kind of having that bucket of revenue and expenses over here, and then take that 60,000 as well? I mean, I don't know if you can do this, do you know what I mean?
Money that goes through the budget gets apportioned, basically.
Yes. So you would be recommending reducing our spending by $60,000 capital spend? No. Yes? No, 160. I was thinking if you could take that 60. You want reserves in at 100? Yeah. And then reduce the overall spending of the budget by $60,000. Yeah, and then have that interest, but. And then use the stabilization fund to fund the capital investments that that line would otherwise reduce. Yes. So the 60 will translate out into about a 40-20 split. I think our concern with lowering the spending is the lower the spending goes, the lower the bar goes.
And the higher the bar gets.
So 3.3 of. I know. Growth on less 60,000 is less we get. It just, we're creating a gap. I know. Whichever way we go is starting to create this gap. I think reducing the spending, I would be concerned taking a capital line out, because we're going to need those minor investments every year for the foreseeable future, and I think our argument is we should be trying to get it back to 100, and then grow it from there, not taking it down to zero.
My question is.
We could do, but yes, that's an option if you wanted to reduce spending, that doesn't touch kids and program. It's stealing from Peter to pay Paul. Exactly. Which, we do a lot of that.
I just wonder if it's just heady, wise, and pound foolish, because the, you know, Avi just talked a lot about our bond rating, and saving 22% on the cost of the new building and because of our bond rating, and that a lot of that was based on our reserves, so I.
So two things a plane, I know he'll want to jump in on this. One of the things we did point out as a con is it could have an impact on future ratings, but yet at the same time, our reserve, he was wise to remind me today, our reserves are growing, and will grow with this new influx of interest income, so we'll be pushing up against the 5% allowance for E&amp;D at a certain point. At that point, we'll have to spend those reserves. So.
I just don't want to take $100,000 and have it affect millions and millions of dollar on a decision down the road.
Yes, it's not necessarily about the number of reserves, reliance on reserves is what they look at as well. So you may not be using a lot of your reserves, and they may be, you may be growing them, but if you show a reliance, a sort of continued reliance on those reserves, that's not favorably looked upon.
Yeah, and I, I looked into some of that matter too, because I had that question. I think more than anything, I just remember back to the days of like credit analysts, they want to know cash, 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 cash. So, yes, putting it in the budget is not a great practice, especially if you're talking about policies, et cetera. You know, having a policy around use of reserves could be one way to offset that, so maybe we decide that they're not to be used except for in dire emergency, that might be an option. I think at the end of the day, they're going to want to see what's the balance doing. The balance is going up, and there's $100,000 in the budget, they're probably not going to worry as much as if the balance is going down, and there's $100,000 turning to 200,000 to 400,000. So I think the biggest concern is less about this item, and more about the multi-year trajectory.
Well, that was my second question, is, so the first thing, the first con that we read about is that it reintroduces reserves into the operating budget for years to come, and is that something that can get talked about with the towns, where we will do this to help their budget this year, and next year they will earmark a different percent of new growth to make sure that it doesn't become a multi-year thing, that it's a one-year thing?
I can't speak for Essex, but my understa, it sounds like someone, or one of the entities is always going to be using reserves in some way to right the ship unless we go out and increase revenues all the way around. Because my understanding is that Essex is, you guys can chime in too, Essex is using reserves to balance its budget annually, so this is kind of passing, it's sharing the problem a little bit. Essex is going to be using.
So if we share the problem this year, could it not become a multi-year?
Well, I guess what I would say is, all budgets are constrained by Proposition 2 and 1/2, and there is a timeline that normal growth can, can go with that. We had a very long and successful 10-year process before we had an adjustment, which was great. A lot of communities just cut because they can never get them passed, and other communities do them every, you know, five to 10 years, because they know that Proposition 2 and 1/2 is a way to check in, but not necessarily an intention to cut program. So that really gets down to the philosophy of all the towns, and that's probably a bigger question than we can answer tonight, but I would say that no matter what we decide tonight, this is really part of a multi-year look to budgeting. And I would say fortunately, we have a very collaborative process on multi-year budgeting, and so whatever happens this year, it sounds like Essex has a very short-term problem right now that needs to be dealt with. All of us have multi-year challenges around revenue constraints, and so I think we have a good collaborative process set up to deal with that. So it's not a direct answer, but I would say it sounds like there's a request to deal with a short-term problem now, and we know we're going to have to deal with a long-term problem over many years anyway, and this doesn't create a guaranteed problem next year automatically, it just means that we're on the track towards looking at this for multiple years. If I thought that this was. If I thought that this was going to trip and override next year automatically, I would say that, I don't see at this level that we're at that point. It's just, it's bringing to light the fact that this is a multi-year challenge. Does that answer the question?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Let's, can we go around? Ken, do you?
I was going to say, Sarah, had you finished? There were just a couple of thoughts. Number one, last year, we didn't, it points out in the last year, we didn't get into reserves and we talked about that at the end. We managed to make the cuts and that was impressive here. Just to be able to...
Not a district.
Pardon?
Not a district.
Yeah, but there was, I mean, it was, we haven't touched the reserves before even though it was much bigger hit than last year. So, reserves are for short-term surprises. Part of me is wondering what is, there's definitely an element of this part of the collaborative part and I guess I'd be curious, does this, is there a benefit? The other, Essex essentially, the $33,000, you know, cut in assessment, is this a benefit to Manchester or what's the impact to Manchester of this $66,000? And I'm just wondering what the impact of that is. Is this any like, yeah, this allows us to do something else that we might have done later a year or is that not...
It lowers the assessment obviously to Manchester by $65,000. Part of the problem is, although I'm sure Manchester would love another $65,000, I think part of the problem is it creates a bigger hole for us next year. That, and I don't want to speak for you, Greg, but don't give us the $65,000 if we have to make it up next year. That's kind of the thought, right? Nobody wants a big hole next year.
We may try to allocate that $65 in a capital reserve fund of some sort so that, so we're still taxing it because I don't want to have to raise an additional $65,000 on top of what we have to do next year in '21. So, I think that's something we will be talking about.
So, okay, no, that's, that was, so essentially, next year, it isn't automatically that, you know, with Manchester, you would be able to use the money or reserve the money. In some ways, I am, it's definitely the district and two towns is a collaboration, is a partnership. In some ways, I wonder how symbolic it is in huge amount. So, I'm less, I'm not very concerned about the fact that we're going to reserves which are there to fix a short-term hole. And if it helps Essex, because I know we're all managing through yearly, I know Essex with the public safety buildings and that, there's, we're trying to be very focused and deliberate about each year presenting a limited array of options and not channeling where we focus and belong. So, I would find a good approach.
Sure, I would like you to support this. Essex is going to have a few big asks this year of its taxpayers, one of which was the school building and I think that they came up and really helped us out this year. And it's a conservative ask, it's not out of this world. And Essex is going to be dipping into their reserves as well and we take up a very large chunk of the levy capacity. So, I wonder if you could just tell us what the reserve number is because I think our reserves are very healthy. The bonding that we have is based on the number that we had when we went for it, so it's not going to have an impact on that.
Do you have an idea?
Yeah, basically, looking to end fiscal 2018 at around 4%. And we, you know, have ranged between 11 and 12 over the past decade, I would say. And we had a couple of years where we got to the kind of concern phase where we were starting to dip down towards 8% with a, an amount in the budget that was so high that we could see us going through them in two to three years if we didn't correct. So, fortunately, I think the town stepped in to help. And the reason, as a reminder, that we were relying on them is because we really couldn't increase assessments fast enough to keep up with the massive enrollment growth that we had without a revenue correction that exceeded Prop Two and a Half. So, I think everybody understood that that was based on just serving more kids. So, that adjustment happened and that's what's allowed us to get back to the 12% range. And again, as you see from S and P, they're saying they're good and they're healthy, they're not AAA level, but they're, they're pretty close.
Please, Caroline.
I didn't know that we were like, going through this or asking my questions.
You can, ask questions.
Oh, I don't really have any more questions. My thought molded over and, you know, I don't have any questions. I have an opinion if you want to hear it.
A few money.
I, we are not in a position, as much as I know Essex stepped up to help us, to me, any money that we are going to take out of reserves, we need to go back to the kids. And I think it's just going to set us up for too many unknowns in the future. We're already made, we don't have money to give and as much as a goodwill jester, I don't think we can do it. I can comfortably say I want to take more. And it's, it's, it's a shell game, we'll be running around, but I would like to, if we're going to take money out of reserves, put it back in where we need it in the programming.
So, could I, could I...
I don't want to debate it, that's just my opinion.
No, but I, but I, but I want to, I want to address it because we do have this interest money that's coming in and that's not accounted for.
But we have so many things that we need.
Yep, and...
That would benefit the kids in both towns.
Yeah, and I would say...
We're, we're, yeah, yeah.
I just, I think that we have, we have $100,000.
You know how I look at it, it's like we're a regional school committee. If we were not a regional school committee and we just had one town to answer to and our one town suddenly had a crisis, this wouldn't even be a question because we'd all be working together more. And I think sometimes we think of ourselves as kind of like our own little thing, but we're more of like a three-way Venn diagram than our own little thing. And so, when one piece is pulling, I feel like we need to be able to flow a little bit to help them.
So, can I ask two questions?
So, wherever appropriate, I just wanted to say a few things.
Please.
I know you're going around the horn.
Can I just, can I just jump on Caroline's point?
Yes.
I suggest we look at it in that it is helping our kids because I've made peace with this. This is the best, pragmatically, best possible solution I can offer for the problem that doesn't start to take away more resources from the students or the program. So, in a way, the alternative may end up being reductions and the reductions just hurts everybody. So, that's kind of, oh, I would never want to do that, but we don't have to do it. I mean, we don't have to do anything. I mean, that sounds harsh, but...
Well, I think next year...
I was saying, it's just setting us up for, I mean, it's a model that's broken. All of our towns, it's not working.
Next year, regardless of what we do, we will have to cut to get to a 3-3. Am I right?
I would make the assumption that we'll come in with a higher assessment to start to show the grow, the grow back from this.
Once we start dipping in the reserves, we're not getting out. And then we'll debate how we want to address that.
But if we don't do this, if we don't take $100,000 out of reserves, put it in our operating budget, if we don't do anything, we are still cutting next year to get to 3-3.
Yes.
Right?
If we don't do anything, there's a chance that Essex will pass our budget.
Yeah. That's a very...
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point.
That would really stick.
In some ways, what...
I'm sticking to the better. I have said my piece.
I do feel like we've made a concerted effort to try to meet Manchester's request through the past few years as well. The 3-3 we have arrived at, not because it's the historical trend of our budget, but because we've been asked to bring it in as close to that as possible. For some years, when they can, we'll go higher, but that's because it works with their model. It's not working with our model. Our model had us at high threes and fours conservatively in the out years. So, I feel like we do our best to, to Sarah's point, it's, we are one entity with three different parts and we're all trying to work together to make it work. So, in this year, it doesn't, I'd love to be throwing $100,000 into curriculum development and capital investments, but we can't pay the basic bills yet. So, I think we've got to get to the point of paying the basic bill without doing any further damage and then figure out how to afford it.
Ben, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, so, Ben Budrick, Chair of the Essex FinCom. I think, I think the way that I would frame this is that it's really about collaboration between the two towns and the district because we are in the process of having some challenging conversations with our departments in Essex about budgets. And this is an offset. It makes it much easier to have those conversations to know that, you know, that the school is playing, the district is playing a role in this as well because, I mean, if we, it's two and a half percent, I mean, in terms of the, what we're dealing with in growth each year. And so, you know, there has to be some, some offset on the department, on, you know, our various departments. So, I think that, that's a way to think about it. The other thing is we've also been reliant on reserves as, you know, we've talked about. And the last three years, we've used $200,000 per year from our reserves, from our stabilization fund. A lot of the reserves that we have in Essex are actually restricted funds. So, they have to be used for specific purposes versus just general town usage. So, you know, we've, we've been fortunate because in past years, you know, the receipts have come in where we've been able to pay the, the use of those reserves back. But, you know, this, this year is much tougher just in terms of the receipts on the revenue side. So, and that's been, you know, getting clear and Ginny here has been doing a lot of work in terms of...
Just to ask a good question, you say that you've used the $200,000, but then you were able to build that back up again. So, you were, you were not depleting it each year by 200? Or you were taking it and then getting the receipts and then building it back up so really...
Right, exactly.
You weren't going down.
At the end of the fiscal year, right.
Right.
Yeah. So, I mean, but just from a, you know, municipal finance practice of relying on those each year. I mean, you know, what's been driving this is we have a lot, we're dealing with the same, you know, unforeseen sort of one-off expenses. So, we have a big retirement component that, contribution that needs to get made to pension. We have, we have OSHA, which I know is affecting, you know, Manchester as well. We have legal costs, we have health insurance as well, and I'm sure I'm forgetting, but I think those are the big ones. So, those are, we're trying to offset those in terms of our, you know, our annual budgeting process. So, really, I think it's just about, you know, how do we, how do we sort of equitably bear this, you know, financial burden?
Can I ask you a couple of questions on your reserves?
I'm sorry, am I...
On the reserves?
Yes.
So, if this hadn't happened this year, how much would you be dipping into reserves?
Probably, well, Ginny's whispering mine here, over 200.
Over 200?
Yeah.
So, with this, there's a pretty good chance that it goes up, right?
Um...
There's a pretty good chance that two, plus 200 on sort of a...
Yes.
A non-event, you see what I'm saying?
Right, right.
I'm having trouble...
From what you've had as a baseline, can you draw a...
Yeah, thank you. Baseline is what, the word I was looking for. So, you're sort of 200-plus baseline, that is likely to go up this year because of...
Right.
These hits.
Exactly.
And then on the retirement, can you tell us a little bit about that? Is that not sort of a...
A surprise increase.
Yeah, a surprise increase. Is it just because more people retired?
It's about, well, it's about 150,000, right? And correcting if I mistake this, but I think the actuarial target for the year for, for last year, I mean, market essentially had a flat to negative return. And so, we have to, we have to contribute to offset that.
Set the right amount.
Yeah.
Okay. So, where's, where's the surprise come from? I don't really understand that market, so maybe I'm asking stupid questions, but is that not sort of a, a sort of static kind of number that is, is...
No, do you want to, do you want to speak in terms of when we... A lot of this came out, sort of came to light over the last few weeks, so it's fairly...
Bye. Ginny Boochi Intel. So, we did, we received a very big unexpected hit on our retirement apportionment this year. And when I spoke to Essex Regional Retirement, they said, "Well, we didn't perform well." "Okay, well, what areas and what's your target?" They're still targeting 7.5%. And they know that if they continue to target 7.5%, we're still not going to reach the out years where we were supposed to be fully funded. So, they're trying to work on a better plan for all communities that are in Essex Regional Retirement. The hit this year really surprised us. We didn't expect this, it was unforeseen. So, we are constantly having conversations with them about, "Well, what really happened to you? I understand what you're saying basically, but why did Essex get a huge hit and not other surrounding communities? It's not like we had more people retire, we didn't hire a lot more people. As a matter of fact, we've lost people and haven't been able to replace them. And now, it looks like with this budget, we're not going to be able to replace anybody we've lost." So, that's all I can speak to at this point about it. I hope to have more information as time goes on.
So, are these numbers, are these hits, are they fluid? Is there still more information coming in? Could these numbers go down?
I believe that this is what they're telling us is a firm number for their retirement. So, I think the number that Brendan brought and Annie brought is a, is a firm number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I can just tell you from what we see with the pension as well, typically, they'll set the numbers in the fall, they will, they have a funding schedule that the whole program's trying to hit and they will also look at each group's percent of total payroll. And I think that that's probably more than likely the biggest change, if I had to guess, in Essex, even though I haven't seen your numbers, because those are the biggest things that can create district by district changes unless you have a specific surcharge for a specific event. And sometimes you can have a stable payroll, but if other districts are going down relative to the total or, you know, then you might go up as a percentage. But, I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for your specific situation, but those are typically the very common thing that create changes. And they, they do get set, I believe, in, in November, October, November timeframe.
Thank you. I buried us into a little bit of a rabbit hole, but I was just kind of curious about sort of the projecting of some of those numbers.
And, Shannon, I just want to say, it's not in Manchester, if Manchester is coming and asking for this money, and I'm going to say no, I would just say no to anybody, I mean, we don't have it. So, it's not like, for me, it's not Manchester versus Essex. That's, it's just, we don't, to me, we are not in a position to be putting money elsewhere. So, that's, I have to say that.
Sure. Has everyone had a chance to voice their opinion or ask questions?
Thank you, Ben and Ginny, for clarifying because I had the same questions that Shannon had. I, I do think we take up a large chunk of, I mean, it's a fact, we take up a large chunk of Essex's reserves. This is a fairly conservative ask on our part without...
We take a fair chunk of the capacity, the levy capacity.
Right. And I agree with Sarah, we are, we are one entity, we need to, we need to have each other's backs in times like this. I know that, you know, with regard to the OSHA, that's a, that's a non-recurring incident fee. So, I don't, I, I feel confident in what Pam and Avi have come up with here and I think it's a good solution. I don't have any further questions, but I think it's, I think it would be, I think, I want to keep the collaboration very secure, so that's how I feel about it.
Okay.
Sure.
So, obviously, between a rock and a hard place. Essex has been a fabulous partner. We value that partnership. Manchester's been a great partner too, we value that partnership. So, I think when one of the partners has nowhere else to turn but the other partner, we have to try to listen and figure out a solution. Whether or not we can pull the trigger on it is another question. I worry about how we're setting ourselves up for the out years. I worry about how we're setting ourselves up for possible reliance on reserves because we just dug ourselves out of that hole a couple of years ago. That's not, you know, that's not a long time ago, that's just very recent. But I feel like we do have to help Essex. But what I, what I want to be very clear about saying is if we do this and we go ahead and do this, we need to be very clear with our voters that we will be looking at an override in the very near future. We can't continue to do this. And I think we have to be very clear in that message with our partners, we have to be very clear in that message with our collaboration group because I don't think the towns can sustain it and I, in the environment of Prop Two and a Half, and we certainly can't. So, I would say we should do this. I would like to keep the relationship with Essex intact and I feel like if we...
Do you think they're not going to be our friends anymore or something? I mean, everyone's...
No, I think, I think it's, it's sometimes can be a tenuous situation. And I don't, I don't want to drive a wedge into the relationship... don't want to drive a wedge into the relationship and have, um, you know, have it sort of be the elephant in the room, that we didn't support them.
You're getting too feely, it's just, it's a money thing, so we don't have it.
I agree with almost everything Shannon said, but I really want to be careful in making sure that we don't connect, uh, an override in the next one to five years to this incident.
Yeah.
Because I think we're going to need an override in the next couple of years.
I think we do.
I don't want to say that, because we thought coming into this year-
Can we throw some-
I don't want to talk about overrides.
Okay.
Like, I really think we need to like-
If we are going to, I don't want it to be ever tied to this incident.
We need to be careful of, we need to be careful of saying that.
I think it's premature to predict a year in which we're going to need an override, I think what we're saying is, what we're, the way we've been operating in the past five days since our, or seven days since our last meeting is, problem presented, immediate problem. Needs to be solved for this budget season within a certain timeframe. We know what the action of going to reserves can result in down the line, but there is a scenario where we can come out of it next year, raise assessments slightly in an agreement to two, both towns, if they're in the right position to do so, and get back on track for a slow rebuild. I would just caution to be, to put a timeframe on need for override. We're still working on the 10-year commitment, I don't know that we can make it work, what I said at town meeting stands, I'll never commit to saying, "No override," because if it's in the best interest of kids, we'll come to you and we'll advocate for it, but I think there's a lot of things we can do between now and then to make sure we have turned over every stone, checked every efficiency. I don't think we can do that all in four weeks.
Yeah.
And do it thoughtfully and-
Let me clarify. May I please clarify? Perhaps I should not have said-
Reverse the statement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perhaps I should not have said, "In the next couple of years," but I think somewhere down the line-
Talking about it.
Yes, I think somewhere down the line, it's, it's going to be something that, no one can ignore.
Well, I think that that's, that's what we've all seen here and in surrounding towns, is that you get into sort of a rhythm of, you know, you sometimes dip into your reserves to fund your budget, and then you get to a point where you can't do it anymore, and then you, then you do this override thing.
Check in with the towns.
The thing that I would caution us against is communities like Ipswich, who announced, "We're going to be going for an override in five years," and that just, people hear that and they think, "No, you need to manage your budget."
Right, but people know we're managing our budget. Uh, we've gotten to the point where people know-
People in this room know we manage a budget.
The community knows, too, I think. Yeah, and I'm going to say, I think so. I think we've got some people over it, they know.
Pretty, pretty majority support at town meetings-
Yes, yeah.
-on these budgets, so I would say that the community does know.
And we're talking about collaboration here and everything, and that's, how does, when you're in the collaboration game, how does Manchester feel at the FinCom and for Selectmen about this, that we're doing, that we're entertaining doing this? I mean, are they, like, okay, we understand, we want, we think it's a good idea?
Well, no, I think they understand, and I can't speak for, for everybody, and I shouldn't, but I think they understand, but perhaps it's not their first choice that we do this, because there's a spillover effect, and, and Manchester doesn't necessarily feel like maybe that's a burden that they should carry as well.
There, I've been hearing Manchester has said, "We've got to keep it down, we're paying two-thirds of the assessment increase, so it's got to be managed, because we can't handle it." And that's, and we have known that as well. And I think both, the Prop Two have not only applies to the district but to the towns as well, in terms of everybody's, how do we keep it going, and at the same time, to your point, you need to minimize use of reserves, and the number, I can't remember who said, check-ins, where the, the town governments or the regional school districts have to check in with the towns, say, "We've managed it as far and as long as we can, and we're at the limit of good fiscal practice, we're going to need an override." Nobody can predict.
I just would like to add, too, is, I haven't heard anybody in any of this conversation here or in collaborative sessions with the towns say they have concerns about our spending patterns, and so, I think, of all the things to be considering here, it sounds like people are feeling like our spending plans, while they're tight, and I think that's hit to some of, ties to some of the things that Caroline has mentioned, um, you know, we see that we have a gap every year, people feel like we're, people are saying that we are being responsible with their spending, and so, I think that's a great collaborative place to start, the question is, what can we do to fine-tune the impact of taxpayers without going there? So, I think the fact that we're not talking about cutting spending, and people aren't asking us to, and people aren't saying, "I'm looking at this or that line and can't understand why it's so high," I think it's just something that we need to all keep in mind, whatever road we go down.
Thank you, that's a great point you bring up, I should have said that earlier, because it's, it's, I think, crucial in, when you look at the whole situation, it's not a spending problem, as we've said, it's a revenue problem.
So, what are we looking for tonight? Because they, I mean, we're not, we're looking to approve our budget tonight, but are we just having this discussion, are we looking for, are, are we looking that the school committee's going to say we're supportive of this, or we're-
So, we, we can do, we can do a couple of different things, we can vote on the, correct me if I'm wrong, we can vote on the budget and have this incorporated into the budget, or we can vote on the budget, and we have maybe a few weeks to really see maybe where some of the Essex numbers come in, um, but we probably, if, if we're going to do this, we should do it within the next probably three weeks or so, because we've got to get this information into books and-
Do you want a sense of the committee on where they stand in terms of not to exceed 100K in reserve allocation?
I would actually like to have this voted tonight, so-
I agree.
I have a feeling that we all kind of know where we are. I don't, I don't know that we need to discuss it, I don't know that Essex's numbers are going to change all that much, no, so, I, there's no need to, to kind of-
I agree.
To sit on it. Pam, what do you think?
I think primarily we're voting the spending number.
Which is going to change.
And if you vote to include reserves, I don't think there's anything that prevents us from removing reserves at the March 5th, if there's something very positive that happens along the way, where we can alter that number.
You mean the first enough?
Yes. Or you can go, if it's more than the comfort zone of the committee, you can go in reverse of that, vote the spending number as is, hold the assessments as they have been currently calculated, and then on the March 5th meeting, if things don't change, vote to insert $100,000 of reserves, pushing the assessments down. So, you can go in either direction.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait, 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 wait. I need to reschedule.
So, I would say, break your decision-making into three things, so, spending-
What was the last one that she agreed with?
Taking-
Holding until the 5th and then inserting 100K.
I think we all, we did hear that some of this impacts, if this is coming up to what Essex is dealing with, I think one of the things I heard is that they're trying to figure out where their own budget is and what we do contributes to that, so.
So, I think we need to have an answer tonight.
Okay. I think that you guys, we should, it, it sounds like, with the exception of one person, people are comfortable with doing this, let's approve our budget with that 100,000, and so that they know you're not stringing anybody along, and if you're in favor, you can vote for it, and if you're not, you don't have to support it, but you're supporting our overall budget.
Right, so we're-
So, not waiting until the 5th.
Yeah, I think, it's, it sounds like, it sounds like people know what they want here. But, but then, but then you'd have recorded, that person would have a recorded vote of not supporting the budget.
No, I'm going to support the budget, I'm just not going to support a portion of it.
I was going to say-
So, we can have a two-part-
I have to say one thing, because I can just feel it from this, Carol, you carried out at the point, you may be truly reminding us again what the ultimate baseline goal of what we're trying to achieve is, which is the best possible education for the kids given that budget constraints, I don't think anybody here is going to speak on that.
Oh, no.
So, we're, no, so I'm just saying, so we are all with you on that, like, we should put that up.
And I, I think you can also, to Pam's point, you can have, typically, we have a vote on the capital budget and a vote on the operating budget, that's the spending number, uh, and you can have it as shown, and if you want to have a separate vote on that item, so, anyone who dissents with the revenue assumption can still support the total budget, uh, spending level, if you have that opportunity to do that, it's up to you, we can vote, whether you want to separate the votes or not, I'll leave it to you.
Vote on the capital budget, vote on the operating budget, and then we'll vote on operating budget to include reserves.
All these numbers.
That way there, you can document, you're unanimous, I'm assuming, a unanimous vote on the capital budget and the operating budget with spending, and then people can weigh in independently on the use of reserves.
Okay, may I clarify one thing? At what point are we voting the, or where do the assessments shake out after you factor in the reserves? So, are we voting that tonight as well?
Uh, I, you can, I have run the numbers, so you can take a look at them, and I can pass them around, if people want to see.
So, what you have in front of you, which has come around already, is our original operating budget without use of reserves-
Yep.
-and the capital budget, and what we're going to send next is the budget inclusive of reserves with the amended assessment numbers.
That's what he's saying.
Yep.
So, right now, the budget stands at 26,389,946, correct?
The budget stands, uh, no, the actual number is 20, is towards the middle, where it's 26,649,46 dollars. That number is not going to change.
Right, so-
That's the-
Nor will the spending number.
That is the spending number, and it's also equal to the revenue number.
Yep, so-
So, I ask, I guess I would say, will the committee entertain a motion to approve an operating budget of 26,649,46 dollars?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, great, and I'd like the school committee to look at the capital budget, which has been updated to include the impact of the recently sold bonds that we talked about earlier, which is now a capital budget of 4,483,000 dollars.
So moved? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, approved.
Great, and then I think the last item would be to create a motion to modify the FY '20 operating budget, stay at the total spending number as previously approved, but to reduce town assessments by 100,000 dollars to be provided instead of assessments by reserves.
So moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One.
Abstention? No? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, Caroline, thank you.
Come on.
All right.
For the record, that puts Manchester operating assessment at 2.76 and Essex at 3.02.
That's right, so that's an increase of 393,569 dollars, Manchester, an increase of 236,963 dollars for Essex. 100,000 dollars basically splits 65,35, roughly speaking, so it's about 65,000 dollars reduction to Manchester and about 35,000 dollars reduction to Essex, roughly speaking.
Is that what's in question?
Give you the handout.
Okay. Can you give me-
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for all the-
I wrote on it, but ignore it.
Questions?
Avi, you sent this to me in a Word document?
Yep.
And you want it all in minutes, right?
Word for word.
That's what I thought.
Using the same approach we used last time. Were you not black and white?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're doing.
The second time. I'm sorry, we're back.
So, let's move on to some food.
This was very, I'm sorry that I could not wrap my brain around this. Is that the only one? This was the one?
What, some food?
Yes. I have just one question from last week. I'll do a cook announcement while we're transitioning-
Yeah.
-which is, just for everybody in the audience, if you're interested, our next community meeting for the building project is going to be on March the 13th in the evening, so that'll be an update on all things budget and design.
Thank you.
March 13th? You'll see, your, your inbox will be full of notices, but if you're doing your calendars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Plug in the, the low battery.
Nice to see you in a winter weather.
Is that funny?
Thank you, Karen.
No, I think it goes down.
Just remember, Shannon, we need to sign lots of documents.
Right on, am I buying another house?
Pretty much, 32 million dollar on it.
Oh, yeah?
Very close to the wall. Very close to the wall.
Giselle.
32 million dollar house.
Oh.
You know that was here?
I did, I did have the, the dongle.
By the way, I'm just stupid, just lying about how it went step by step.
I did, too, but that was last year.
It's because of weak-
Well, I did it when I did the minutes, and now it's left.
Okay, um, so, moving on to the food service issue?
Yes.
Do you guys want to go over this real, really quickly, just the high points again, just a quick refresher? We don't need to go through the whole thing.
Which one, for the food?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the, Avi, can we just hit the high points on this, just as a quick refresher?
Yeah, I think the high points were, thank you, that we outsourced our food service beginning with fiscal '17, we did that for reasons that included financial management, but also program management and program expertise. I think we saw immediately, as we reported, that it was, it was very helpful, and for those who don't remember, we included in that outsourcing, uh, a request that current staff who would go into the management company's payroll be compensated at the same levels, because we didn't want to have outsourcing happen on the backs of hardworking folks who have been really dedicated to our program, but nevertheless, there was a lot of financial savings to be gained. So, what we have seen over time is that they really have narrowed that gap significantly, but one of the accounting changes that comes with this is now that folks aren't on our payroll, benefits that we used to carry in the general fund outside of the food service revolving account, now those benefits get paid directly to Chartwell's, and so, it's really all captured in that revolving fund, and so, that expense has also been reduced significantly over time, but still constitutes an expense that is in excess of what our program has ever been able to absorb. So, that requires periodic adjustments. In the past, we never made those adjustments because we were really just, every few years, school committee might vote to close a gap in the revolving fund that was based on operating performance excluding fringe. Now, we don't really have much of an operating gap in the revolving fund anymore, because it's being managed, frankly, so much more effectively financially, but we still have to cover this fringe amount. So, that's why we're asking school committee to vote to close that, that amount, which really is two years' worth of deficit, and so, that really turns into a request for 177,000 dollar transfer to close that gap from available funds, which are essentially reserves, that was factored into the amount that we presented on our reserves, because it's a deficit, and so, our, you know, the Department of Revenue makes sure, is aware of all your deficits, and they deduct them from your available funds anyway. So, it's really just about an accounting item, but it's also about making sure school committee is fully aware of how this works. Again, to summarize, the operating performance has gotten significantly better, and is now operating pretty darned close to break even on an apples-to-apples basis compared to where we were before. The only other thing I'd remind you of is that when we put out the RFP, we excluded fringe from the break-even expectation, precisely because we knew that programs don't tend to run at a break-even with that level. So, this isn't really surprising, but it's time to catch up for that, and so, that's why we brought this to school committee's attention. There's a lot of other statistics in there that we talked about, there are some goals of areas we still want to improve, which includes improving participation, it has gone up at the middle high school, it went up slightly at the elementary level, we think it still could go higher, maybe a new building will help with the facility condition over at Memorial. When you factor in enrollment reductions at the district over the past couple of years, we are up on a revenue-per-student basis, so that shows continued improvement from a managerial standpoint, but there's still work to do. So, that's, I think, all the points that we hit on last time. So that's, I think, all the points that we hit on last time. If there's anything that people want to talk about or feel like we didn't get enough time to dive into last time, I'm happy to answer any questions. Any one's got a question?
I'm sorry that I just have a hard time with this because I just have to wrap my brain around it. So insurance costs, we anticipated that those would be something that would be not covered by the cost of the programs as it goes, right? It's not.
Yep.
So that's up and above.
Yep.
Then there's the cost of the program itself.
Yep.
We had some problems with collections. And I think the thing that's hard for me to kind of understand is that you have this running total here that is very confusing.
Well, I realize that the way I presented it confused people essentially.
Collections isn't the story.
Yeah.
Cost of healthcare for labor is the story.
And other fringe benefits.
But it's, we anticipated it. So it's not really much of a story. Well, we didn't, we anticipated it, but we never factored for it.
Ah.
So in our previous assessment of pre-Chartwells?
Yep.
We absorbed in our lump fringe payment.
Yep.
Everybody's healthcare.
Sure.
So we never assigned that cost to the operating health of the program.
Yep.
We took that aside.
Okay.
When we went to Chartwells, that had to move off of our books because the employees are now Chartwells employees.
Yep.
So we need to pay out of pocket to Chartwells the cost of those benefits.
Sure.
So that's really what the large deficit is.
Okay.
So what he's trying to show in the chart is if you compare how we used to assess the operating health of food service to current circumstance, they're knocking it out of the pot.
Yeah.
But we had this below-the-line piece that we always just lumped in with our other health and fringe expenses that we now need to pay explicitly to that company.
Okay.
So it needs to come out of our big bucket.
Yeah.
And into theirs. So it's really, we just need to, I think, change our accounting and account for it on a new basis going forward. So if they increase participation, which has been a goal for three years, right? I mean, we've been talking about the fact that the elementary schools have been lagged a lot.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah, just a question.
So you had mentioned that they're not where you want them to be. With the, is it because, is it a Manchester, more of a Memorial problem than Essex? Do you think with the new school? Because you were saying that the kitchen isn't really a full kitchen or something last week, so once they get a kitchen?
So, let me just say, first of all, the elementary programs, both schools have lagged. The high school, which had a big increase when we outsourced due to the offerings. I'm wondering if the new facility will breathe a little bit of life in there, but it's, the problem is similar at both elementary schools.
I'd also say you want to keep your eye on enrollment too, because their participation went up at the middle high school when there were more people to participate in the program. So participation's going up while enrollment is increasing in this facility. Participation is going down while enrollment is decreasing at the elementary level and decreasing significantly. So I think what we could do is a deeper exploration of the relationship between enrollment and participation.
Well, we did show that.
What about product?
Yeah, I was just going to say. Can I just, before we get there, I just want to touch on that and then we'll hit on product. I apologize. But when we did show the presentation, we talked about the fact that factoring in enrollment, we were about in the 250s to 260s on revenue per student excluding the federal reimbursements. Whereas in the pre-outsourcing phase, we were in the 220s to 230s. So it's improved either way. It's just a question of, could it improve even more? So it definitely has stepped up even on a participational level and when you factor in the fact that our school district size isn't quite as high as it was in '14, '15, '16. So.
So let's talk about product. We've heard that the elementary school, the food, isn't appealing. Is that true?
Well, it's a different, again, I'm having my brain rush. It's sort of a different offering.
Yeah.
Because it's a different kitchen. It's probably more heat, a little bit more heat and serve than actually creating something where they have the capability here in this building that they don't necessarily have in the other buildings.
A little more capacity for scratch cooking here, that's true. I think there's, there are frankly more options that middle schooler and high school kids tend to eat. They tend to be a little bit more willing to venture into different areas, whereas younger kids tend to like things that are a little bit more, you know, finger food, you know, pizza and, and, and the, every, the one thing to remember is all food is extremely highly regulated by the Department of Ed.
Didn't this administration just blow that all away?
No.
I mean, can we start sure doing Sour Patch Kids?
No, no, no. All that stuff is the same.
Like we're going down a little bit of a rabbit hole because the quality of the food is not leading to this gap. If you look at their program to program, they have closed the gap and they're coming in almost at a break even. So they're managing those component parts. I think there's room for improvement.
Okay.
I think we could bring Paul in. She could probably speak more specifically to the decisions that are made. I think there's a lot of factors. You're making meals for a small percentage of 200 students in one building.
Yep.
So how much variety can you offer when you're cooking for that small population? We have 800-plus staff in this building, so let's call it close to 1,000 per day. So it's very different operations. And I don't know that either Abby or I have the expertise to speak to how they're making menu decisions on it the other ways.
Well.
You do. So why don't we get you the person that can speak and answer those questions with some authority?
Yeah.
Because I think we're guessing about why they choose chicken nuggets one day and pizza the next.
Well, and I think, to be honest, I think it's important to know that I hear a lot of different feedback and sometimes that feedback doesn't really align with sales. And so number one is, we will never serve something that isn't on the Department of Education's list of approved foods. But within there, I think you're going to have some community members who say, I don't want to see pizza four days a week at the elementary school level, even though it might be a whole grain pizza and have, you know, tomato sauce and cheese on it. And some people will say, I don't want those things. Well, once we start getting into more particular choices of what people prefer, you realize that for every group of people, there's a different preference. And it's very hard to please everybody there. And that's why most programs tend to look to the Department of Ed to choose the options and then to let the customers pick what they want, as long as you're not offering things that are unhealthy specifically. So we could, for example, probably boost sales if we had pizza more days a week. I think some people would say, great, because my kid's eating. Some people would say, I don't want my kid eating pizza five days a week. And so that's where I think it becomes hard for this group or even for me to be the one to say, here's what the menu should be exactly. We just want to make sure we're offering a healthy item that is within the Department of Ed regulations.
Sure. But I also want to sell food that people are going to, that people are going to eat because waste is not good either.
I also think that kids in the elementary level, their parents are more apt to pack lunches for them. That's just a.
I think, I think if you step back and look at this from, you know, a 20,000-foot, these guys are losing 1,200 bucks. That's pretty close to break even. So they are, you know, they are doing something right on the offering, you know.
I'm not saying that I'm, I just want to make sure people are happy with the
Yes.
food that we're serving.
But I think if they, if they brought it to almost break even, I think that says that people are pretty happy. I'm sure there can, there can be improvements.
I will tell you.
I think this report isn't designed to be a quality satisfaction, it's just an analysis of the numbers. And I don't want to see. So I think we could go into, we could do some quality analysis and bring Paul and the team in and have you ask all of these very legitimate questions. I just don't know that we have the data in this report to get at customer preference and how they're measuring.
The only thing I would add is that Chartwells has surveyed parents a couple times about preferences. And so they're actually very open to that. They're, you know, they're in, from the for-profit sector. You know, in our case, they haven't, they can't have a profit, they have a cap fee. The Department of Ed regulates that.
It's also very fluid. The parents can go in and go on the app and all that kind of stuff.
There's a lot of options if they can see what's available.
So I think the, I think the bottom line here is that the bottom line looks pretty good. You know, it's trending in the right direction. We wanted to see them be able to close that gap. We wanted to see them manage some of these costs and they have. On the collections, I think we still have some work to do, right?
Yes. Yep. The policy helps. I think they're working towards it and.
Do we need to rewrite any policy about that?
Not this time. I don't have, I haven't heard anybody give me.
When you graduate, you have to clear out all of your, your bills. I mean, you have to, your obligations before you get your cap. And I don't know if that's being enforced necessarily with Chartwells.
I think one thing, just to recall the conversation we had, is that we can't limit the program.
Right.
But we can remind people of what they owe and pursue that actively.
Right.
And we also make free and reduced available. We make sure people understand that if there is a financial need, that they have an opportunity to have a conversation with us so that we're, I don't think our problem is around inability to pay, it's about improving the payment collections process. And Chartwells has been very accepting of that responsibility.
Can you tell us where on here is the uncollected dollars for this fiscal year?
Yeah. That, if you look at.
Last column?
Yeah. So basically, this year, as a forecast, they've actually improved the collections over the prior year.
So we're looking at, remember a couple of years ago, which was like outrageous?
And that was the $19,000 year, right? Yep.
Yeah, okay. That's all, that's really what I wanted to clarify. So I would say the problem we're trying to solve with this or the question that we need answered is, is it a realistic ask for this program to make enough revenue to cover the cost of health and fringe? And if not, then what's our mechanism for making sure we have available dollars to cover that responsibility? That's what I see in this report.
Yeah.
And then secondarily, sure, the more we tighten collections, the more there is to go to pay for the total operating of the, of the program, but I don't think that's ever going to be perfect. But what is, so the number every year for the cost of the program is, for the fringe, is declining?
Declining significantly.
Fringe.
Yep, for fringe, declining. Even the fringe.
A high of 98?
It's now down to, you have forecasted a number of about $65,000.
Yeah.
$6,000 for the current year.
So that's what we're paying for health insurance?
Yeah. Another benefit, social security, unemployment, all those types of things.
And they're in a big pool, too. I mean, Chartwells is a big company. It's not like, you know, they're giving them.
Their benefit are a lot more emblematic of what you would see in the appropriate marketplace than what you would see in the municipal marketplace.
Yeah.
Which is less.
So we need to budget that money every year?
Be prepared for it. But I think my goal is to drive that down as much as possible. And when I look at where we were, which is probably closer to a $200,000 contribution down to $66,000, I say, I'm so glad they're here.
Yeah. Yeah, they seem to be doing a great job on all these metrics. Okay, so do we need to vote on anything here?
Yeah, I think I would vote to close the deficit of the revolving fund, the multi-year deficit in the revolving fund by transferring 177,000 dollars, 208, into, into revolving fund available funds.
Okay. Do I have a motion to do what you said?
Some.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. And that was accounted for in the balances that we showed because they were.
Yes. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'm sorry that I had so many stupid questions.
Very stupid questions.
Okay. All right. We're almost to the finish line.
Pam. Well, my first big announcement was the March 13th community meeting. I know we bounced around a couple of dates and Christina, we had her in here in person today and we went through a calendar as one of our exercises. So I'm also going to add to your calendars and the community at large, March 27th will be an invitation event for the neighbors of Memorial School to take them through what we know of the upcoming process and the work that's planned for the summer so that we can speak directly to their concerns as a butters. So that will be March 27th. And then similarly, on May 8th, we hope to have more clear phasing plans and a game plan for how we're going to manage occupancy next year. And we're going to invite the parents to a meeting just to talk to them about that game plan and their concerns. I think, I know I'm starting to get some questions about the phasing process and the conditions that we're going to be living under next year. And we don't have a great answer for them at this point. It's kind of, it's in the works and we need to hit this next benchmark. And I know that riches, WT riches all over it. It just isn't quite there in their timeline of preparations yet. And that's why we've targeted to make eight. So people that have asked, we've had a couple of kindergarten parents just inquire, the best I can do is point them to what already exists on the building committee page, which we'll get an update over the next week or so. But we have some, you know, rough diagrams of what it will look like. But I just keep reminding them that we are going to be occupying the site while they're building and there will be noise and disruption.
Do we have times for these meetings?
All at seven.
7:00 PM. Remind me what the March 13th meeting is.
That's the general community meeting where we'll present.
Kind of like the ones we did the nines and sevens.
Same exact format.
And they're all 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
We don't even worry.
Sounds good.
And then just one more thing to put on your calendar and your radar screen on March 6th in the evening, the high school's going to be hosting their parent event for the ADL, which is just part of their continuing work around building their capacity to deal with issues of diversity. And then our other, just good for you to know, not really.
That's at seven?
That's, that may be at six, so I will check that for you.
Yeah.
The work of the K-12 Literacy Cap Task Force continues. I think I've mentioned it, it's a slow process, but a good one for us to be engaging in. We've made a big step forward. We're going to be partnering with the Hill Literacy Group to conduct a formal needs assessment of K-8 literacy, which will formulate into an articulated action plan. So this is an attempt to modernize and bring both schools into closer alignment around literacy practices.
Okay.
So this will look similar for the literacy group, you know, as some of our other program reviews have done in the past. So it'll be a third-party analysis.
Clarification on the ADL meeting? I just looked it up in my calendar. I have it for 6:30 because I must have pulled it off on Patricia's.
Yep. So. Pam, also you had, we had the regionalization meeting in Essex.
Yes.
About further regionalization between the two towns. I think it was a, it was kind of a choir. There were a lot of people from existing boards, but it was a good meeting. It laid out the process and I think that they're going to be talking to folks in both towns about what works, what doesn't work and what ideas that they have. So I thought it was a good meeting.
It was. It's a task force, right, Amy? There's a, I thought I saw that.
It's like MADC is leading it. So it's, they were.
The Collins Center?
The Collins Center.
The Collins, yeah.
Yeah. And they, they worked with us on our strategic plan. So they're very well versed in how to kind of move things along and get a report out. So I think the report would be out in May. Yeah.
There had been in 2011, they had done this, I think it was 2011 for Hamilton and Pam's been along the lines where you were, we're looking at the two towns DPWs and the schools operating, so that exists out there.
And I know Rockport's looking at something like that, though. I think it may be a little bit more school-centric and it wasn't with Collins, it was with, you and I talked about this. I can't remember who, I'll have to look it up.
Out of Western, I mean, it's not a Western house, is it?
I believe. Jefferson group?
I can't. I think Rockport's in a real tough place.
I think they are, yeah.
But I thought the, it was fun to be at a meeting where they were holding up the regional schools as a really good example of collaboration and a success model. And I think we do have opportunity around some of the DPW and maintenance. And technology was another area that came up for further review. So I think it's exciting and it could be that we find some things in that report that helps us with our larger topic of discussion, which is finding ways to make this more sustainable for everyone.
I have a thing. Friday, the 15th, which is the Friday before February vacation, if anybody's around, it's that open dress rehearsal for the drama test performance. So unless you're, their, their competition is the first weekend in March at St. John's Prep, but that's like a big commitment, but this is an opportunity for everybody in the community that can see the performance for free.
Awesome. Thank you.
What place?
Six o'clock. I think it's, I, I, oh, that's.
I have it in my head.
I do, too.
Is it called Big Love?
Yes.
Big Love.
We could all use a little Big Love.
So, a little. And I just put another plug, if you have some free time on your next couple of Tuesdays, the building design is coming along, and it, it looks the same, but it's so much more developed, you can get a real sense of where they're going with things. Join us at a building committee.
Do you know what really helped me is a little, just a little reminder to me.
Tomorrow night is the safety meeting, what is it called? The informational meeting about the public safety town meeting we're having in the 11. Yeah, but it's, tomorrow's the informational meeting, and we can't go because we have building committee.
Pam, can I ask you a question? I know Alice, the Alistrel went today, didn't it?
Yes.
How was it?
I had like quick pass by with Tricia, she said it went well.
Okay.
They were light on students today, I think.
Hmm.
I think we're very.
True, it was a bad, yeah, really.
Who thunk it? Good day to go outside, though.
Plan these things, you're a plan, who knows?
Pam, are we meeting, is this type of subcommittee meeting tomorrow?
It is.
Okay. Any school committee comment?
No. Thank you, everybody, for working together and making hard choices and doing hard things.
This is a very good collaborative group.